Well, it's seven oh one. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's go for the roll call.
Gary Israel.
Peter Fox.
Vance Garwood.
Marla Canfield.
Dan Coulson.
Thank you. Let's move in, move on then to the minutes from our July fifteen meeting.
Mister Chairperson, I Gary Israel make a motion to accept the minutes from the July fifteenth Planning Commission as presented.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Let's move on to agenda item four. Committee staff report, development report. Anything to report there?
Nothing additional to report.
Okay. Sorry. How's, what's the, it's probably not really the time to ask this, but I see they're making progress on the, I guess it would be the large culvert over here. North, north of us, I guess, for the, for Yorktown going through. Is that going as planned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they've done water lines, storm sewers up around the Butler Campus.
Okay.
And they're moving south with the water lines and built that box culvert structure. And they'll be following up with storm sewers and then jump into grading and paving.
Every mon, I, I don't come out here all that often, as much as I probably should, so I see it about once a month, a couple times a month. Any other questions of staff?
I just had one relating to just the overall business climate. I mean, are rates getting more favorable? Are we going to see more activity in our planning commissions and the like? Seems to be rather quiet.
What I hear from both the residential market and the commercial market is interest rates and construction costs are pretty tough on those economies right now.
Yeah. I've noticed several projects that aren't, just aren't happening right now. And I think that's why.
The lower end of the residential market has slowed down dramatically.
That's not a good sign.
There's, there's still that really healthy middle part of the market that seems to endure about anything.
Thank you.
I did see the Andover schools were, both high schools were top ten in the state again recently. I think I saw a report recently. Is that right? I don't know where I saw it.
The last report I saw also had Andover in the, the top of the school districts. I know, I can't remember the name of the report either, but I recall seeing that recently as well.
Yeah, I believe this, this was a high school, like, high school by high school specifically, not even necessarily a school district. And I believe I saw one was like, one of the two was sixth and one was eighth or something in the whole state. So that will always be very positive for the community. So, well, let's move on. Agenda item five then, Gary.
Mister Chairman, Chairperson, I Gary Israel make a motion to recess the Planning Commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Dan. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We'd like to welcome everyone and lay out a few ground rules which will apply to each public hearing we have tonight. It's important that you present any facts or views you have as evidence so that any informed recommendation can be made by the Planning Commission to the governing body for their final decision. By statute, the governing body does not have to hold an additional public hearing on these matters, although they may listen to whomever they wish. You will be asked if there's any new information which was not heard at these hearings. It's to everyone's advantage if you present all necessary information at these hearings. For each case, the city zoning administrator provides the commission with background information, then I'll call upon the applicant. Public comments will be heard following the applicant. Once all have been heard, the applicant will have a final opportunity for comments. Planning Commission will close the hearings to public comment and then will consider the fourteen factors on which to base their recommendation. During this time, the commission may direct questions to the applicant, the public, and/or city staff. You should be aware that the Planning Commission can recommend that the site be platted or replatted if necessary, and that a site plan may be required for approval. You should be aware that any uses permitted outright in a district by the regulations can, can receive a zoning permit. Furthermore, if the applicant chooses to describe various features of their development plans, the city can only enforce those provisions which are covered in city zoning and other city codes. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairperson and give their name and address. Please use the podium and speak clearly so that your comments can be recorded for inclusion into our minutes. Official notices for these hearings was published on the City of Andover Municipal website, website on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, and notices were mailed to the applicant and all real property owners of record in the areas notification on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Record shows at least twenty days have elapsed between the publication and mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there's evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare the proper notification has been given. Although we do not encourage such communications, I will ask the commission if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to these hearings which they'd like to share.
None.
No, none. Let's move on then to item five point one. This is a public hearing on case number BZA dash V two five dash zero 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 dash zero zero one zero. Again, before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission, commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they or relative own property in the area of notification or have any conflicts of interest.
No.
No, none. I now call upon the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
Mister Chairperson and members of the Planning Commission and Port Zoning Appeals, in this case, this applicant is seeking to construct a twenty-four hundred square foot accessory structure on the property, which is about six and a quarter acres located near the intersection of Harry and of Andover Road. In this case, the property is surrounded by other residential properties, many of which have similar structures. You can see there immediately to the east that it's kind of an unincorporated parcel of land, multiple parcels of land, which feature some agricultural buildings that are also quite large. There are some accessory structures on the subject property which already exceed the five hundred square foot maximum for the SF one district. Those are present when this was annexed, so there are legal nonconformances at this time. Since the parcel is so large, even with this new accessory structure included, it would almost reach three percent lot coverage out of the permitted thirty-five percent. So staff feels that that is very, very reasonable for the area. It wouldn't make this property out of place among the other residential properties around, despite the fact that these are all in the SF one district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of city staff? No. I'll now call upon the applicant to make the presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrator. Is the applicant here? If you'd want to come up to the podium and state your name and address, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Roy Hall. My address, future address is eleven fifty-seven South Ginkgo Lane there in Andover. Just wanted to put up a building there, forty by sixty.
Any questions of the applicant?
Typical use of that building will be?
Man cave.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just looking at the site plan that we've been given, will there be a road or anything, a way for vehicles to get back there?
I've already put in a private drive there. As you can see, I don't, it's not showing it on there.
No.
There is a paved road there, and I'm going to connect the building. It'll have a concrete pad going to that road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, connects to Harry there, so I can enter my property off of Harry and go through there.
Okay. Alan, have you talked to your neighbors south of you about putting a building in?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I'd mentioned it, but that was a long time ago. He's got a forty by sixty, so.
Any other questions? No, it's pretty straightforward. We have one of these almost every meeting, at least one, it seems like. Any other questions? No, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you coming. Thank you. Any members of the public that would like to speak on the case? No. Any written communication been received?
No, sir.
Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify the information. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the, presented supports the conclusions of the finding of fact. The board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation. Like, I can run through those. You can go, go for it up here.
Does the evidence demonstrate that the physical surroundings, shape, or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for the owner, lessee, or occupant? Staff, the subject property is significantly larger than the minimum size for its zoning district and is oddly shaped. Additionally, there, there are around the parcel features several similar structures already.
Concur.
Concur.
Granting the variance will result in a material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff, no detriment is expected.
Concur.
Number three, granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk, or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood. Staff, no such effects are anticipated.
Concur.
Number four, the request for a variance is not based exclusively on a desire of the owner, lessee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. Staff, the applicant wishes to construct a large accessory structure strictly for personal use.
Concur.
Specific conditions to be met? The requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by any action of the property owner or the applicant. Staff, the subject property is over thirteen times larger than the minimum size for an SF one zoning district and is oddly shaped.
Concur.
Concur.
Number two, strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lessee, or occupant of the land or structure. Staff, strict application of the zoning regulations would restrict the applicant to an accessory structure which is comparatively, comparatively very small for the parcel. Other accessory structures present on the parcel are similarly larger in area than the five hundred square feet foot minimum for this SF one district.
Concur.
Concur.
Number three, granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
And number four, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
And finally, five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations. Staff, were it, were it to be approved, the requested variance is unlikely to affect public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare in the city.
Concur. Thank you. After the findings of fact, there's a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove, or table a discussion?
Mister Chairperson. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection eleven dash one zero six dot B two of the zoning regulations in KSA twelve dash seven five nine E, I Gary Israel move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA dash V twenty-five dash zero zero one zero as requested.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gary, second by Peter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thanks for coming. A resolution, resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than forty-five days from the date of this hearing. If anyone's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator.
Just a note, if I may, that we mentioned fourteen factors, and there's not fourteen.
Yeah, there's only nine in this case, I think.
We, we should either amend our statement or pick up another five factors.
I guess we could make a motion amending that part.
That's just a formality. Just a typo on the paperwork from me using a form for a different kind of case. Sorry about that.
No, I'm just curious.
All right. Let's now move on to item, agenda item five point two, which is a public hearing on case BZA dash V two five dash zero zero one one. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they were a relative owned property in the area of notification or have any conflicts of interest.
No.
No.
I now call upon the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
In this case, we are looking at a just over one acre parcel, about one point two acres, zoned SF two. In the SF two district, the maximum for an accessory structure might default is three hundred square feet. And this applicant is requesting to construct an approximately ten thousand square feet accessory structure. There is an existing approximately fifty by fifty accessory structure now, which would be torn down and replaced with the new one. That one is similar to in our last case, a label of nonconformance that existed well before the adoption of these zoning regulations. From what I could find, it was put in in about nineteen eighty-five. With this new structure included with the existing house, this parcel would reach approximately twenty-two percent coverage, again, less than the thirty-five percent that is the maximum for the zoning district. The height would come near the maximum for the area. It would be approximately thirty-two feet tall, the maximum being similarly thirty-five. Given that the lot coverage will stay well below the maximum that is permitted for the zoning district, and the existing accessory structure is not causing any undue harm to the surrounding properties, we feel that installing the new one in its place would not cause any additional negative effects.
Any questions of staff?
It seems like a rather large structure.
Definitely.
It's, it's, what is the height of the existing fifty by fifty?
I didn't have an exact number. I believe this will be a little taller.
Probably fifteen feet.
Give or take.
Give or take. I used to own this, this acreage, and it's probably fifteen feet. It's not very high right now.
I should just ask you.
Was I right, nineteen eighty-five?
I don't know. I, I, I didn't, I only owned it from like two thousand and eleven till seventeen, maybe, something like that, eighteen, yeah. Haven't been there in a while. Sorry, Peter.
No, I was curious, because it's, it's a substantially larger complex, building complex. And I know there's been a lot of building going on to the east.
Yep, that's the Summerlin addition, and they are building it out right now.
Were they notified in writing?
Most of those properties are still just under the ownership of the developer. There's not houses on the majority of them yet. But we notified everybody within the required radius. I got a lot of questions about this one, but no one wanted to protest it.
Good. To answer your question on the size, the applicant, this is more the applicant's answer, but the building itself was added on to it at least once, if not twice, and it's pretty, pretty low. It makes parts of it almost not very usable if you're going to try to put anything of very much size in there.
The fifty by fifty?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty low. Yeah. But again, that's for the applicant, not for me.
Sure.
Yeah, right, right. No way he hit a tree spade in there. That's right. Yeah. If he happens to. The new building looked like to me would fit one, though. Any questions of staff? No? I'll now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and response to any zoning administrator questions or reports. If you'd want to come up and state your name and address, that'd be great.
Yes, I'm Adam Church with Parabolic Construction. My address is one zero seven three zero East One Hundred Third Street South, Mulvaney, Kansas, six seven one one zero. The structure will be constructed in place of the existing fifty by fifty. It has been noted by the client that this structure is not usable for current parameters or current objectives. The internal components have interior support walls and columns that inhibit him from having any kind of car lift or any kind of usable space. The condition of the structure has been retrofitted several times over the years. The exterior shell is diminishing. The influence of the new building will provide a better overall appeal product. It will have an eighteen foot sidewall plus peak, which comes near that projected twenty-eight-ish foot height. That really comes into play because it is constructed out of two separate buildings conjoined together, which brings together the full ten thousand square foot. It makes an L shape, as identified on the site plan that you guys should have. It's roughly a forty by one hundred and a sixty by one hundred. One section of it, the sixty by one hundred, will be used mainly for his cars. He is a custom car collector, so he just wants a place to be able to store those internally. The other part of it, he's thinking about doing some kind of recreational thing for just family gatherings. He's thinking about just a general hangout area, potential indoor pickleball court. It will be climate controlled, so. That's really what his intentions are with this space itself.
Any questions of the applicant?
How will it be situated on the property?
It'll be situated in the northeast corner of the property.
Thank you.
Yep, so it'll be back behind where the house is, and it will overlay where that existing shop was already occupying.
Is it gone in place of the windmill?
It's going to come close. Yeah, I think the windmill is going to be relocated.
I hope so. Any other questions of the applicant? Is it, is it going to be, I think it showed here, I can't recall. What's the exterior going to look like?
So the exterior is going to be finished very nicely. They're going to have a covered porch area off of the frontage to be more indicative of a, of a common residential space, so that way from an accessory structure application, it doesn't look out of place with the area, so. The landscaping side of the project while not being noted in this file is very accommodable as well. It'll have shrubbery trees, everything from the outside hardscape to be able to accommodate its placement on the property. So it's all stuff that's going through the design phasing afterward.
Probably easier to get that done than when that north side's full houses.
Yeah, I bet that's part of the.
You'd probably have some neighbors out there.
Well, and not to mention too, yeah, that the, the sound of building this wall having occupants right there, like, so we're trying to stage it in such a way where we can get it constructed.
Yeah.
Prior to being an inhibitor to people living right next to it, so. Getting it built, getting it constructed is more feasible to do it now than later.
Sure. Any other questions of the applicant? You gentlemen have any questions? Marla?
Yep.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any members of the public here like to speak on the case? Any written communication been received?
Nope. Like I said, I got quite a few calls about this one, but no one that actually took issue.
With, I guess that would be, that's not K-wood there, that's, what's it called right there?
Directly to the east is Summerlin.
I guess I meant to the north. All those houses would have gotten a mailing.
Yeah.
Quail Crossing. There probably a lot of people got mailings considering it's so close. Yeah. Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no more, no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the required findings of fact. The board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation. Great, thanks.
Does the evidence demonstrate that, one, the physical surroundings, shape, or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for the owner, lessee, or occupant? Staff, the subject property is over six times the minimum size for its zoning district. A three hundred square foot accessory structure would be somewhat out of place, given the existing accessory structure and the amount of land covered by the parcel.
Concur.
Concur.
Two, granting the variance will result in material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff, no such detriments are expected.
Concur.
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 Three, granting the variance will result in inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk, or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood. Staff, it is unlikely that any such effects would be substantially different when compared to the effects of the existing accessory structure.
Concur.
And I'd like to add to that, that the property has a wall on the south and east side.
Right.
That's constructed now, so, I mean, that would be restricting any air or light or anything to the adjacent property. And that was put in by the developer.
And even though this building will be taller, it'll be more visually appealing than what's there now. What part you can see over the fence definitely be more attractive than what's there now.
And having gone into the homes that are being built there right now, they're single level, and from, from their floor plan, you would just probably see the peak of the building and nothing more.
Peter, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
I was just going to ask how high the wall was.
Eighteen plus the peak.
No.
No, the.
Oh, sorry.
Wall is.
Sorry.
Six feet tall.
Six feet. And we have a thirty foot structure.
Yeah, you'll definitely see it.
I think you'll see more than just the peak.
Definitely see it.
Yeah.
Four, the request for a variance is not based exclusively on the desire of the owner, lessee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. Staff, the applicant wishes to replace their existing accessory structure with a new, larger one for personal use. No monetary benefit is expected.
Concur.
Concur.
Specific conditions to be met. One, the requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by any action of the property owner or the applicant. Staff, the subject property is over six times the minimum size for its zoning district. A three hundred square foot accessory structure will be somewhat out of place, given the existing structures, given the existing accessory structure and the amount of land covered by the parcel.
Concur.
Concur.
Two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lessee, or occupant of the land or structures. Staff, strict application of the zoning regulations in this case would result in a structure that is somewhat out of place, given the existing accessory structure and the amount of land covered by the parcel.
Concur.
Concur.
Three, granting the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
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 Four, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
Concur.
And five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations. Staff, were it to be approved, the requested variance is unlikely to affect public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare in the city.
Concur. Thank you, Dan. Is there a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove, or table a discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined the findings of fact have been found to exist to support all five conditions set out in subsection eleven dash one zero six, uh, B two of the set zoning regulations in KSA twelve dash seven nine E, I Marla Canfield move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V twenty-five zero zero one as requested.
Thank you, Marla. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I Gary Israel second the motion.
We have a motion by Marla, second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than forty-five days from the date of this hearing. If anyone's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thanks for coming.
Mister Chairperson, I Gary Israel will make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any member items?
How's uh the new lodge being accepted? I went to the ribbon cutting. That was pretty nice.
It is. We've had a council workshop there already and um hosted several meetings there. Uh a regional county meeting and um also um I believe we've had a a an additional event there, but it seems to be received really well.
Anything else? Anyone want to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. That was a, that was probably a record.